And welcome, ladies and gentlemen. A call to order, the August 21st, 2014 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. I'll ask Mr. Krepp to please do the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chair, welcome. It's a beautiful August evening, and I have the roll for you. So Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Commissioner Bernard?
Here.
Chair Ludlow?
Here. Please rise with me and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll announce we're going to recess as the Board of Commissioners and reconvene as the Housing Authority Board for the next two items. I'd like to introduce our Housing Authority Commissioner, Paul Reynolds, to my left.
Thank you.
And as was said earlier, the other two are excused. They're the two commissioners. So, the Housing Authority Public Hearing, Mr. Krepp?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is a public hearing to consider approval of the fiscal year 2014 Annual Plan Amendment. And I'll ask Mr. Chuck Robbins with the Housing Authority, he's the Director of our Housing Authority, to give you a staff report.
Good evening.
Nice shirt, by the way.
I know. I was trying to outdo you.
Yeah, there you go.
So anyway, what you have before you is an amendment to the 2014 Annual Plan. Any amendment to the plan requires a public hearing. This is to deal specifically with a HUD requirement on what's called a flat rent. In public housing, the residents are asked to pay one of two levels of rent. They can either pay 30% of their income, or they can pay a flat rent. Flat rent has always been determined by fair market value for the particular unit that they live in, so whether it's one of our public housing parks in the high-rise or one of our scattered sites. Previously, we, as the Housing Authority, had determined what that flat rent should be. HUD has now set a new standard that says at the least, flat rent must be 80% of the fair market value for that type of housing. So, we have fair market rents that are set for the entire metro area, and so regardless of whether it's in Lake Oswego or Oregon City, a one-bedroom will have the same flat rent. So we have, you know, about 560 public housing units. This change in the flat rent changed the amount of rent that we were charging for 93 different units. So we had a, what that means is we had a lower flat rent than the 80%. But in terms of actual impact to individuals, we only had three households that were paying the flat rent, and the total impact will be $200 a month, spread over those three. So what I'm asking is that hold a public hearing, see if there's any comments on this, and eventually approve the attached resolution. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Commissioners, have any clarifying questions of the presenter?
Actually, I do. $200 per month, or $200 for the whole year?
$200 per month.
Per month.
For three households.
Lot of work, but it's 200 bucks, I guess.
It's 200 bucks.
All right. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this public hearing. You should have turned in the card, Joe, but you're welcome to come forward.
I did turn in the card, but I didn't realize you were going to have this first. But $200 is a lot of money for a person on limited income, because having apartments myself and working with the Housing Authority in Portland, representing my city, 200 is a great deal for people. Their rent goes up, but their income doesn't. So that's all I wanted to say.
I think you might have misunderstood. It's a total of three people, of which the total for those three people is 200. I would say it's safe to say you divide that by three. Is that right, Mr. Robbins?
Well, actually, what we have is two households whose income went up $43, and then one whose income went up $186.
Their income?
I'm sorry. Sorry. Their flat rent went up $186.
And that one was more than the others?
Because the unit that they lived in, in our opinion originally, was of a lower quality than a typical, and I forget what this is, this is a three-bedroom unit. So we looked at a three-bedroom unit, and in our opinion, the fair market rent was less than 80% of the base fair market rent for a three-bedroom. So what we tried to do at the Housing Authority is look at all of our units and decide what we thought was a fair, fair market rent, based on, you know, location, quality, size, all of those things. HUD has said, no, we're going to simplify that and just make the floor at 80% of the fair market.
All right. So two of them went up by $43?
By $43. Now, I should say that, you know, these, in all three cases, these individuals are, chose to pay the flat market because 30% of their income was significantly higher than what they would be paying under the flat rent.
All right.
Oh, I misunderstood. That's for three different apartments, you're saying?
Yes, three, that is correct.
And so I don't quite understand how they would figure on those bases. Three apartments, three apartments, 200, 200, 200?
No.
It's kind of complicated.
$43 a month difference for two people. So one person went up $43 a month, another one went up $43 a month, and the last one went up?
186.
So you're saying, but the $200, what is a significant $200?
The number was actually $272 per month for all three.
So you're just getting approval on three apartments?
No, the approval is to amend the plan to allow us to use HUD's required 80% of the fair market value as the floor for all flat rents. So that's the lowest that we could ever charge on a flat rent. In some cases, we charge more than that because the unit, the fair market rent would be higher for that unit.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Well, you bet.
And again, because of the requirement that was brought down to our level from HUD to implement the flat rate, formulaically, this is the result, affects three people for the figures you defined.
That is exactly right.
It's not that we arbitrarily did it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, that made me spill my water. I've been doing so well here. All right. So, anyone else wish to speak on this matter? If not, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll ask Commissioner Reynolds for a motion.
I move we approve the resolution amending the Housing Authority Fiscal Year 2014 Annual Plan.
Second.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Reynolds, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Any further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Aye.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye. Passes 4-0. And now, oh wait, 4-0. Now the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Okay, the Housing Authority Consent Agenda, we have a resolution number 1907, Approval of the Housing Authority's Certification for the Section 8 Management Assessment Program.
All right. Any Commissioners want to remove or pull any of the items on the consent agenda? I'll ask Commissioner Reynolds for a motion.
I move we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Reynolds, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Any further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye. Passes 4-0. I'll announce the board when I'll adjourn as the Housing Authority Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you.
I hope you have a speedy recovery.
Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner.
Yeah, Commissioner, yes, Commissioner. All right. We have some blue cards for public testimony, and a call for Joe Havercamp and Les Poole, followed by Shirley Sotterberg.
Joe Havercamp, Oregon City, Chair Ludlow and Commissioners. When I came to the Board of County Commissioners, I was under the assumption that you had not paid the legal fees for Tootie Smith and Ludlow, but I understand that you paid $5,000 for each of your Commissioners. I, as a citizen and as representing the Citizens Watch Committee, we did not think that you should be paying anything to the lawyer fees. This had nothing to do with county business. Jake Anderson left the county after the, I'm reading this in case you tell me my misinformation like you usually do, Ludlow, this is straight from the horse's mouth.
There's some end of it.
And I read it where it came from, here. Jared Anderson left the county after leaving, having allegations that Commissioner Smith and Ludlow created a hostile environment, discriminated against him based on his age, sexuality, the man was gay, and violated the rights of privacy. The investigation, that although insensitivity and inappropriate committee comments were made, they did not rise to the level of breaking the law. Well, I know that your bill was $7,846, and Tootie Smith was $15,107. And our sympathies go out to Jared Anderson. The comments made were not called for. This is not part of Commission business, and that's why we didn't think, the citizens, that we, out of our taxpayers' money that we have, that we should be paying for this. And if this would have been something that would have been related to the Commission, I think we should have paid it all, but it wasn't. This was your own personal thing. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to make a comment, as you can well imagine. You said it yourself, that we are absolved of a hostile work environment accusation, any, in fact, any accusation that was made about our treatment of Mr. Anderson, and the record will show that no Commissioner ever complimented him or his department more than I. That said, he chose to leave the county. Last time you were here, you said we forced him away or fired him. That's not true. He left on his own volition. We were together, doing county business, when he alleged certain things happened, and again, the special investigator absolved us of anything. So yet, we're somehow guilty, even though we were absolved, of that kind of blame. You're not going to talk right now, Joe. I'm going to finish. You seem to come here regularly, somehow demeaning me and telling me that I have no worth. My goodness, even when there's a 5-0 decision up here, somehow it's my fault. One time you said, "I'm the leader." Are you going to let me finish?
It's the Commission that...
No, I'm going to gamble unless you just be quiet for a little while. You know, it doesn't seem to matter what I do, even conjunction with these other Commissioners, you have a problem with me, and I think that's your problem. I think it's wholly appropriate that they paid all of our bill, and I believe Ms. Smith feels the same. It's such an interesting precedent for the future for these Commissioners, when they are in a similar situation. One Commissioner's claimed that he shouldn't be paid because we didn't come and ask. The county attorney told us not to ask until later. County Administrator agreed with that. Both said it should be paid in total. Now, there has been situations in this Commission, which I can certainly prove, where a certain Commissioner did not ask the Board to pay and went out and got an attorney, and instead, Mr. Wheeler, the former Administrator, went ahead and paid the bill without coming back to the Commission. And that is one of the Commissioners that reluctantly, in fact, voted against us, even getting $5,000 each. So I think there's some interesting precedents that have been set, and maybe what's good for the goose isn't good for the gander. So, Joe, you're done for the evening. Thank you.
Can I not?
No, we're not going to have a rebuttal session, Joe Havercamp.
Of course not.
Mr. Poole?
That reminds me of the old days. Where's the good old days, when we had a lot of hostility? I thought we were going to get beyond that.
I hope so.
Les Poole, Gladstone. Couple of subjects, but this one I've got to say something about, because I would hope that none of the other Commissioners would ever put themselves in the position that you put yourself in. Enough said on that. You folks are under the gun. It's not about what Joe Havercamp says, it's about what the public says and thinks, and you don't get a fair scratch because you're elected officials. I get that. And you're held to a higher bar, and you better get that. Different subject. I've been coming in over and over, talking about Metro. I hope the public takes some time to look into Portland Tribune and look at the pushback against the style of housing density, not increased density, not infill, but what is being imposed on the region. And I use the word imposed. I'm sure if I went to a Metro meeting, or if any of you went and asked if they're imposing their will on you, or they're mandating density, you'd be reassured that they don't. I've been to enough of their meetings, and I've been around Metro long enough, and we really need to change Metro. And a lot of what's going wrong in the region is that we've got a concentrated entity, another layer of government, that has too much authority over you folks. And regardless of any differences we may have in other opinions, I think anyone that's an elected official in Clackamas County probably knows that Metro's got too much power, and we need to change that. We really do. I appreciate your time. I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Ludlow and Commissioners. There seems to be a shortage of women up there tonight. I am here to address the same issue, the legal fees. I guess I'm a little disappointed that the county prosecutor or county attorney didn't handle this situation, and that we stepped out to the public, out to Portland, to a Portland attorney, to satisfy this. I guess I'm confused over the whole issue. I've read, you know, in all these little newspapers, like Willamette Weekly and some of those, some very, very disparaging remarks about Clackamas County and the type of leadership that's going forward in our county. I hope we can put that to rest. I would like to think that we could rise above the goings-on that are happening. I am disappointed that we did pay the legal fees. I think it's a conflict of interest if you, John, and Tootie voted because you were voting to put money in your own pockets. I don't know who voted and who didn't, so I'm not even, I won't go there any further. I only want you to understand that we, the citizens of Clackamas County, the taxpayers of Clackamas County, would so very much like to see our leadership rise and become good, solid citizens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me clarify something in regards to legal counsel. Mr. Madcor appropriately thought that they may, he may have a conflict of interest in continuing representing me. So he recommended very strongly that I go out and get legal counsel. It wasn't, Mr. Madcor is not capable, there was a potential conflict of interest. I think you should also note that I did not vote on my own $5,000.
Okay, I didn't know.
I voted for Tootie's, which I had a right to do. She voted for mine, which she had a right to do. There was a three-person majority, as was necessary. Now, I think it's a pretty sad day, when I wasn't told in advance, go ahead and get an attorney, and by the way, you're not going to get paid anything. Mr. Madcor has stated that he was bound to represent us. He would represent us. However, only because of the potential conflict of interest was I sent to outside legal counsel. Again, the recommendation was not to go to the Commission and ask at that time, but to come later. It's a pretty sad day, when we were told to go out and get legal counsel, and then with the full expectation, no, staff didn't know it was going to happen that way. It was totally a political decision, and shame on the Commission for making that one, because there but for the grace of God go individual Commissioners later on.
True, I agree.
And so we will deal with those as we may, but again, here we're coming forward and revisiting the same thing over and over again, which I sent an apology letter out about, and it was published in several newspapers. When is enough enough? You're going to beat that dead horse to death. So thank you very much for your testimony. I appreciate it. I should also say that staff should probably be a little concerned, because, I mean, who's the next people to be thrown on the bus? If your Commissioners will throw their fellow Commissioners under the bus, what about our top-level executives? What about our directors? What about our managers? And a lot of them were in attendance when this decision was made, and I'll bet there was a little fear and loathing running through them. Commissioner Savis?
Well, I'm hoping we can move on. There's been enough of a waste of taxpayers' money up to this point. And I would just say that had we, had the majority of the Commission, the other three Commissioners, myself, Commissioner Schrader, and Commissioner Bernard been advised and informed in executive session, or whatever it may be, of the circumstances that I just learned about a couple of days ago, we'd have a whole different outcome here today. But we were not informed until after the fact.
Let me point out something to the public. Mr. Savis did not go to the Board to ask permission to get an outside legal counsel. This is in 2012. He instead went out and got it, and submitted the bill to Mr. Wheeler, County Administrator, who paid it without coming back to the Commission. So no permission from the Commission, and no authority to pay that. He did that on two occasions in 2012, totaling over $6,000. So again, good for the goose, but not good for the gander. Sure, go ahead, Paul.
You're leaving out substantial facts, and I'm not going to pursue this discussion.
They were given to me by the County Administrator. You're welcome to view them.
And I wasn't charged with anything either, by the way.
I wasn't charged anything?
I was not charged with anything.
Oh, that makes a difference. I thought the policy said whenever you go out for legal counsel, you will get advanced permission from the Board. Again, the only reason I did not, because I was advised by legal counsel, it wasn't timely to do so.
Were you advised on the public records payment request you made last year, Chair Ludlow?
I came and asked the Board to pay that, but I did not...
After the fact or before the fact?
After the fact.
After the fact. Thank you.
Well, you did yours in 2012, I did mine in 13. Does that make us even? Just checking. All right. We're going to get on with further business, and all the public testimony is over, and that business is as follows. It is time for a public hearing. Mr. Krepp?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do have two public hearings this evening. The first is the first reading of an ordinance that would amend Title VI of the Clackamas County Code relating to smoking regulations in and around county facilities. County Council Stephen Madcor will give a report to the Board.
Thank you. Good evening, Stephen Madcor, your county council. And what the Board has before it this evening is an amendment to Title VI of the County Code, which pertains to tobacco use on county property and around county buildings. We are proposing that we amend, number one, the title to say that it is a tobacco regulation and not just a smoking regulation, and the amendment has some housekeeping updates to it, and it also prohibits the use of chewing tobacco, snuff, Copenhagen, chew, chaw, and whatnot, in county buildings, in county cars, and around county facilities. It furthermore prohibits the use of E or electronic cigarettes, which is really the primary driving force around this amendment, and defines those as a tobacco-smoking product as well. So those E-vapor cigarettes that you see would also be prohibited in county buildings, in county vehicles, on county property, but for designated smoking areas. This would be the first reading of the ordinance itself. It has to have a second reading 13 days apart. We are asking that if the Board were to pass it, it would be effective immediately. If this Board were to have any changes, amendments, revisions to the draft that it has in front of it, what we would do is we would have it be read in title only first, and then we can discuss any amendments we would want to the language of that afterwards. And then we could take it to a second reading 13 days out. Any questions?
I don't believe that, considering there's only three Commissioners, that there could be a split vote and it would simply fail. Correct?
If it does not pass tonight, it would be back for the next available time for when we had a full Board for reconsideration. Correct?
And at that time, if it was a split vote, again, we'd have a second hearing, correct?
Correct, you would. Yeah, you'd have to get three and three to get this thing through on two different votes. Correct.
All right. Do Commissioners want to have any clarifying questions of Mr. Madcor? I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this matter. All right. I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion for the ordinance by title only.
I move we read the ordinance by title only.
Second.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Savis. Any further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye. Passes 3-0. I'll ask the clerk to assign a number and read the ordinance by title only.
Okay. This is going to be ordinance number 04-2014, an ordinance amending Title VI, Smoking Regulations in and Around County Facilities of the Clackamas County Code.
All right. I'll announce the second reading will be on September 11th, 2014, the regularly scheduled business meeting at 10:00 a.m. A Board Order Amending the Local Contract Review Board Rules, County Code Appendix C. Is that my line or Mr. Madcor's?
That's my line.
Oh, was that yours?
I'll back it up.
It doesn't say you here.
Back the tape up.
You go ahead.
Okay. So the second public hearing involves consideration of a Board Order that would amend local contract review board rules. And again, I'll ask Council Madcor to give a brief report to the Commission.
Thank you, Administrator Krepp. The second one we have before you is, as the Board knows, it's going to be taking a two-week recess coming up until September 8th. That being the case, the Board will not be able to convene during any time period during that two-week period. If the county were in need of contract signing authority, which is vested in the Board, it would be unable to do so. So what the Board does during these time periods is delegate authority to our county Administrator to sign contracts and contract amendments on behalf of the Board itself. So you would be delegating contract signing authority to Administrator Krepp until September 8th, between August 25th and September 8th, for contract signing authority. If any should arise during that time period, he will have the authority to sign, and he will report immediately to the Board, and it's next time that it convenes, what contracts he has, in fact, signed on behalf of the Board. This is really a temporary amendment to our local contract review board rules.
Any questions of Mr. Madcor? I would say this, I know we do this every year, and around Christmas time and different times, and you know, we look at this year when the Board was not able to meet, well, we did on a Thursday, I beg your pardon, during the fair, but normally, it doesn't happen during the fair. I would hope that more of a standing Board Order could go forward. I would hope that more of a standing board order could go forward, saying that anytime, for one thing, if we lack a quorum, any given week when we do our business, that Mr. Krupp could sign. And in addition, that anytime we take a recess or take time off, that it would be much more automatic than creating a board order every time we must do this. So I'm hoping that we can work on that in the future. So I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this item. There being none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move, we approve the board order amending--
Then we have to read it first.
Oh, that was my fault. I closed the public hearing and asked for, well, no, it says that here, Mary. It says it here, so I'm just going by the script.
Never mind.
The close of public hearing, move and ask, yes, you're right. Let me aim it now. It says, "Open the public hearing if anyone asks us to speak." They didn't. Now, close the public hearing, and then it comes the motion. That's what it says here.
Ask for a motion to read the board order by title.
Hey, that's what he's doing.
Oh, I was, okay.
Were you down for too far? I beg your pardon.
I move, we read the board order by title only.
Excellent, we got it right. Is there a second? I'll second it. So a motion made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Chair Ledlow. So, any further discussion?
Well, maybe we need a teleprompter.
Could be. I want to ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ledlow?
Aye, passes 3-0. I want to ask the clerk to read the board order by title only.
Okay. In the matter of amending the Local Contract Review Board Rules, Appendix C of the Clackamas County Code.
Yeah. All right, I'll ask for a motion to approve the board order.
It is very confusing. I move, we approve the board order amending the Local Contract Review Board Rules, County Code Appendix C, delegating the board, board's contracting signing authority to the county administrator from August 25th and a half, August 25th through September 8th, 2014.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Savis. Any further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Bernard?
Yeah, think about that, will you?
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ledlow?
Aye. I'm going to beat them all. All right, passed 3-0. It's time for the consent agenda. I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay. The consent agenda. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of a funding agreement with United Way of Columbia-Wilamette to provide short-term rent and mortgage assistance services to low-income families in Clackamas County who are at risk of losing their home. Approval of an inter-agency agreement, amendment number one, between the Development Agency and Community Development for the Southeast Bell Road Pedestrian Street Improvement Project within the North Clackamas Revitalization Area. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of an intergovernmental agreement, number 29025, with Oregon Department of Transportation for the Local Agency Certification Program. Approval of a contract with Kodiak Pacific Construction for the Mabel Avenue Improvement Project. Under elected official approval of previous business meeting minutes. Approval of amendment number three to the intergovernmental agreement between the District Attorney's Office and the State of Oregon to increase, improve the quality of juvenile dependency proceedings. Under the Juvenile Department, approval of an award amendment for the 2013 Burn Juvenile Assistant Grant and enhance the services, or to enhance the services of the Juvenile Drug Court. Under County Council, approval of amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the Development Agency, North Clackamas Revitalization Area, for purposes for clarifying certain accounting practices. Under Service District Number Five, Street Lighting, a board order certifying the 2014-2015 Assessment Rule for the Clackamas County Service District Number Five. And underwater environment services, approval of Section 00500 Agreement between Tri-City Service District and PC, PCR, Inc., for the Tri-City Water Pollutant Control Plant Lime Storage Solo Edition Project. And approval and acceptance of the Service Connection Mortgage in the North Clackamas Service Area for Clackamas County Service District Number One. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Commissioners want to pull any of the consent agenda items? I'll ask for a motion?
I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Savis, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Any further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ledlow?
Aye, passes 3-0. And now it's time for the exciting part of the evening, the county administrator update.
Yes, I actually have quite a few items for you this evening. And it's fairly early, so I can go through most of them, I believe. So I, first thing I wanted to make sure to mention is that on August 27th, the Canby Ferry will be closed for routine maintenance. And so ordinarily, the ferry, it runs seven days a week from 6:45 a.m. to 9:15 p.m. every day, but on August 27th, the ferry will be closed. It will reopen on schedule on August 28th. And more information is available on the county website at www.clackamas.us/roads/ferry.html. Or folks can call the Canby Ferry Information Line at 503-650-3030. I was going to make mention, too, that our Health, Housing and Human Services Behavioral Health Division is kicking off a program that will offer training to Clackamas County residents on mental health first aid. The program's called Be the One. It's an initiative to train free of charge 500 Clackamas County teachers and youth service providers in youth mental health first aid. And that's an interactive training program that introduced participants to what are the unique factors and the warning signs of mental health problems in young people. So for more information about that, I'd invite the public to contact Chris Gallego at 503-655-8752. Now, the other thing that happened is, is, boy, people must really like Barton Park, because I got today two separate communications about the citizens in Clackamas County feeling really good about what we're doing up at Barton Park. So one was a communication on our Parks Department Facebook page that said, "We have stayed at Barton Park three times this summer, and I would like to tell you what a beautiful park you have here. It is clean, well-cupped, and everyone seems to have a great time on the river, or in the campgrounds, or the RV section. We would stay here again in a heartbeat. Thank you for providing such a great place to get away. Congratulations to our Parks Department for helping make Clackamas County a great place to live, work, and play." And then I also received an email just this evening from a representative of Kayhut Waste Services. Apparently, they reserved the park, the picnic area of the park, for a company picnic. It just happened to be the day that they had the big float on the river. And the representative from the company wanted to say how well we managed the availability of that picnic area so they could have an outstanding company picnic there. She said that there was one gentleman who seemed to be in charge of patrolling the park and keeping things in order. His shirt said Ranger. I'm not sure if you have more than one Ranger working at a time. He came up to me when I first arrived to welcome us and let us know what was going on in the park. She also wanted us to know that one last thing was the way you handled event parking passes couldn't be more perfect for us. I have been able to do that. I have always had to pre-purchase, and that costs a lot more due to some people not showing up. I love that we paid for exactly what we used. And she also said that in the past that they'd been going to some of the local state parks for this company picnic. Sounds like they'll be back to Barton Park again. So I wanted to share that with you. Then I, I, I wanted to share this, and so I, we received a communication this evening from Mr. Ed Gronky. And of course, as you all know, a couple of weeks ago, we resurrected a program where we would acknowledge citizens in Clackamas County for their outstanding achievements. And one of the things that we did was recognize Mr. Gronky for his commitment to the community. But he sent a very delightful note back, and I wanted to read it into the record for you. So he said, "Chair Ledlow and Commissioners, your letter of congratulations, which arrived today, came as a pleasant surprise. I really appreciate your taking the time and trouble to send it to me. In reading it, I began to think about the rewards of public service and what it can mean to others. In your positions, I know that being recognized and thanked for actions you take is relatively rare, whereas being publicly criticized seems to come with the territory in today's culture. For some reason, during the past 20 years or so, holding public office has, at times, become something for which one has to apologize rather than something to be admired. This strikes me as extremely unfortunate. As Americans, we should encourage our best citizens to run for office and to represent us for the greater good of us all. Unfortunately, many of us seem to have lost faith in any form of government and view our public servants with mistrust and skepticism. This inevitably discourages the very public who should represent us from wanting to do so. Then, of course, we complain bitterly about the caliber of our government. I still prefer to approach anyone in your position with the attitude that you are serving for the best of reasons, even though we may disagree at times on philosophies and conclusions. I don't intend to change that attitude." And so he said then, "Enough of my philosophy. I just wanted to say thank you, and thanks for everything you are trying to do for the citizens of Clackamas County." And that's my remarks for these meetings.
Mr. Gronky has always been a real statesman, and I think I emailed that to him after, after his letter. He's a delightful man to work with, a facilitator, and a man who really wants to just work with people to get them to yes. And he does an outstanding job of that. By the way, Thomas is kind of the chief ranger out there, and he is a very good one. I was out that same day and saw that picnic, and it was very appropriate how they cordon off their parking and don't let the floaters get into that. So I was very impressed with the workout I was out that day, and they had the rangers, the sheriff's deputies, as necessary, and really handled that well. It's great to continue to hear that enforcing the rules that were in effect for years, that mean no alcohol in the parks, has made a dramatic difference. I will announce in a little while, and it's my turn to talk, about the river, Great River Cleanup coming up. And now we'll start with citizens, or Commissioners Communication, we'll start with Commissioner
Well, today, this morning, I attended a meeting that was convened at Metro regarding funding for transportation. I believe it's that time of the year when people are looking towards the legislature to solve some problems, and transportation funding's one of those. So the members around the table were invited just to give their input, and we and so, we did so, just did just that, and pretty much suggested that if the state's going to get involved, or the state's going to back something, that we perhaps maybe package or come up with a package that maybe this area would prefer and let the legislature or let the governor's office be part of a transportation funding package that would be based on projects, basically, so people could, if they're going to pay for something, they could get what they paid for, versus just going out there and asking for money because we don't have enough money. And there's obviously a tremendous shortage of resources in government, and we're running out of money to take care of our roads. We're running out of money for a lot of things. Our forest, we don't, because of our, no longer cutting our timber, we receive, we don't receive the revenues we did, which were, some of that was allocated towards roads. And the price of fuel has gone up, and yet, and then, of course, that, you know, fuel goes into roads and asphalt and all those things. So basically, the cost to build a road has gone up, has doubled, doubled in the last 10, 12 years to repair a road, more than doubled in cases. So with that, you know, we're all scratching for resources, but I, I really think it's a, at a really critical time where we really look hard at every penny we spend, and we spend it wisely, and that it's invested as wisely as possible. And I do have a very difficult time when it comes to monies that are wasted. It's just part of my DNA. So I, I've, I am a, somewhat of a stickler when it comes to taxpayer money, my own money, my customers' money when I was in business, that I tried to do the best I could for the money they have. So that's part of my, that's what drives me, and I think it's our responsibility collectively to be the watchdogs of taxpayer dollars, and I will continue to do that. And getting back to the discussion, I think that the group said, "Let's talk about projects." And I think the staff proposal was more along, "Let's ask for more money." And I think, you know, it was taught something a long time ago, when someone asks you for something, whether it's your, when your kids say, "Dad could use 10 bucks or 20 bucks," you always say, "Well, what for and why?" And I think you got to be prepared to say, answer those questions, why and why now? And I think so, and when you come out and say, you know, "We have these urgent projects," I think they already know. Well, then the question is, is how much does it cost? So if you think about the difference in the approach, it's, I think, you know, advantageous to really talk about some of the needs, and if you can make that something that people can relate to, and they can see that this particular road, or that particular highway, or this particular congestion that backs up at, at 3 o'clock every day for one mile or two miles or three miles is a problem, those are the kinds of things that we need to, I will say, showcase, because that kind of puts a positive spin on it, but basically, let people know. Educate them on all those challenges we have out there and see some of the problems. And I know that most people that are stuck on some of these highways, whether it's Highway 212, or it's 205, and other roads, and they're, and they're bumper-to-bumper, I think they understand that, but not everyone does. So that's what I have for today. And we'll be gone for a couple of weeks, as was alluded to earlier, and hope to be back in top shape in first week, or second week of September, I believe.
Commissioner Bernard?
Martha's not here, so I'm going to do a little channel. And I'll start off by saying sometimes I can be a pain in the butt, but you two guys are both a pain in the butt, but I'd love to hug you both. And I think we need to put this behind us and try to move forward. I know there's still some challenges ahead on this issue, but I, I think you guys do the best job you can. Sometimes we all screw up. We screw up occasionally, and, and I, and I think we're doing a great job. We just need to put this behind us. I know it's not over with yet, but I, I, I think we could do better. And I, like somebody said, I think we can rise above this. I know we can. And actually, you've shown me, and you've shown me times where you've been able to put this behind us and move on with the business, and I, I'm proud of you for doing that, so I, I hope we can do that. And so I'm not going to get into any of that. I thought the fair was great, the tent, which was a temporary structure put up during the fair. I heard nothing but compliments about it, how airy it was, how big it was, how everybody except maybe one or two people thought it was the best thing that had ever happened. So I think it gives people an idea about the opportunities that the fair, a new structure might provide, and revenue potential that a new structure might provide. I look forward to a discussion, how we can get to a replacement. I think that's going to first require a discussion of the community. I'd love to get the community to chip in, and I won't rec, mention any stores, but there are opportunities in the Canby area to help contribute to that new structure. We even have a can in the office, and I dropped a couple bucks in. Hope you'll stop by and drop a couple bucks in. We just need a couple of five million bucks dropped in. Anyway, it was a great fair. We had a great parade. I noticed that parade attendance is, in all, most parades is really down. It's, I don't know if people are too involved in their daily lives to go to a parade, but it used to be there were a lot more kids in the parade, too. And so, of course, every parent, grandparent came. There's fewer kids, so consequently, I think there's fewer people who do that. I had an opportunity to attend the auction, and I, I thought it was really interesting. And I, I saw kids who their animals were being auctioned off, and they, they were crying, you know, because it's pretty hard to raise something from, as a baby, and then see it go to an auction. But it, it's a great experience for the kids, and I'm amazed how some of the people handled their, their sheep, and their goats, and their cows, and their pigs, and the control they had. they had. And, you know, the attendance is, I went to the rodeo twice collecting tickets, and great crowds, world professional rodeo folks, and people really seemed to enjoy it. I don't exactly find it a thrill, but it's, it's, it's great that people can do all that together. And I look forward to, I'm gonna be in and out, I was leaving town, but that was canceled, so I'll be in and out, and I'd be happy to sign those contracts, Don, if you're not available.
Thank you, Jim. Yeah, the fair was fun. For those of you who missed it, we were out at the fair, it was a great time. I tried to gavel down that noisy sheep, and that didn't work. Tried to gavel down the train that came by when we were doing that, and that worked. Yeah, it didn't matter what I was banging, they didn't listen, especially that sheep, it was quite loud. But it was a fantastic tent, and I went in that, and I thought, man, that, what a great replacement. If we could replicate that in steel form or whatever, it would be a perfect size to take care of us. And Jim, I'll be happy to join with you and work with you on approaching businesses, not only in Canby, but other people throughout the county, to try to get that barn put up sooner than later. Yesterday, I went to the West Side Economic Alliance and heard Congressman, or I should say Senator Wyden, talk about some of the very things we talk about regularly, and that includes road funding, you know? What do we do about road funding? As many of you know, the Highway Trust Fund is going broke, there's talk about a patch being put in by Congress, but that's all it is, it's a patch. Something that Congressman Boomenhour said when we were back in Washington, D.C., as he took a lot of flak for his fifteen cent per gas increase proposal, he said simply, and he said everywhere he goes, he does this, "If not this, what? If not now, when?" And those, those words rang true to me. I'm not sure what to do, especially with fuel-efficient vehicles, vehicle mile traveled, I don't know if we want all want a GPS on our car, if, so Big Brother'd know exactly where you are at any time of day, but I guess if you have your cellphone on and allow push notices, et cetera, everybody knows where you're at, anyway. Yesterday also, I was asked to speak at the South Metro Leadership Forum. Featured speakers were myself and Chair Andy Dyke from Washington County. It was a very good talk, very fruitful, very excellent questions by the audience. We have a lot of similarities. As I told Chairman Dyke, I am jealous of him, because he's got intel, and they are not only a tremendous business employing thousands, but also a very benevolent organization, giving millions every year to Oregon needs specifically. But it was a great one, we had a great time there, and I have some public announcements as well, including that, the town hall, which, we have one coming up, but it's coming right after we come back from this recess or break. So it'll be Wednesday, September tenth, Town Hall at Estacada City Hall from seven p.m. till eight-thirty p.m. That's four-seven-five Southeast Main Street in Estacada, hosted by the Estacada Chamber of Commerce. Estacada has some really interesting storefronts, I'd recommend those who may attend this meeting may want to drop some, buy some of those places, like, they have a great art gallery there, and also Fearless Brewery, but that's just me. The second thing I'd like to announce is the cleanup of the rivers. Now, this, this is specifically for that very area we've talked about, and one of the reasons that we were, we really started enforcing the alcohol ban in our parks is it's from Barton to Carver Park. So it's an annual cleanup, it will be September seventh at nine a.m. You meet at Barton Park on the Clackamas River, and obviously, the idea is to float down to Carver Park. They, they say that event, the event asks for non-motorized boats, et cetera. And again, the idea, they'll have some divers out there to try to pick up, again, when I went down here a few weeks ago, my goodness, it was still sheens of silver that accumulated in that river, usually before this year, I think. I think it's doing a lot better, but the idea is to pick it up along the shore, too. When I went down, there was just a ton of stuff by the shore. God bless the jet boat operators who come up occasionally and pick those up, and we will be picking up, and I will be there with my little plucker along the shore, I don't think I'm gonna be in the water, thank you very much, but working my way down to Carver Park. Now, get this, free barbecue, libations, and silent auction. So there'll be games, prizes, and booths, and it's a friendly family event. So again, you can go to www, as it says on the screen here, welovecleanrivers.org. It's sponsored by just a ton of people, including us. So that's, that's a worthy thing to go to. Give us a hand in cleaning up that place, and I think in a few years, keeping that up and our vigilance with the people on the river, hopefully, we can impress upon people from outside the county, use our rivers, that we care about our rivers, and we want to keep them clean. The last notice that I have, and this is very important, because as many of you know, we have voted to send to the ballot on November fourth, the NCPRD question. The question is, should we increase what people are already paying by thirty-five cents per thousand and give over self-governance to a separate board other than the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners, so that they can run it themselves? Now, this is a short deadline, we knew this was gonna happen, but most people who want to run for this, I think, knew this was coming. But anybody can approach the county clerk right now and file. It is a ten-dollar fee if you want to waive the, getting twenty-five verified signatures from district voters. Now, understand, too, this is, you can only run for this district if you live within that district. It certainly involves Happy Valley, Milwaukee, the urban and incorporated areas between those cities, and a small part of Damascus, also Oak Grove and up to Oak Lodge. So again, the November fourth ballot, but the filing deadline is August twenty-eighth by five p.m. Again, the cost is twenty-five dollars, I got that one wrong, it's twenty-five, ten dollars fee for the filing, and then twenty-five dollars for the voter's Pembo State. And by the way, that is real cheap compared to what most of these races are, they're three to five hundred dollars. So again, that's very important that you note that date, again, August twenty-eighth, you have to turn it in by five p.m. if you want to run for that. I hope there's a lot of candidates, and I certainly hope, and this board does, too, that there'll be a rally to make sure this passes, because that's what people seem to want. I believe that is it, except for this. Ladies and gentlemen, in totality of things, is it words or deeds that matter? You know, for over forty years, I've been a public service servant. I have four pages of resume of where I've given to organizations. I've won awards for, for my giving, including twice Citizen Year in Wilsonville, Heart of the City Award winner presented by a former chair, Charlotte Leehan, when she was mayor, Coffee Creek Correctional Facility Volunteer of the Year twice, and a statewide award winner for my volunteerism. If I was a sexist or a racist, you can bet I wouldn't have gone forty years without that being revealed. So I'm pretty tired of the thumping that I continue to get, and as Mr. Bernard said, maybe we should just get over this and go on. So that being it, and there being no further business for this commission, ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is adjourned.